Council come to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Raynor Ross.
King.
Butler.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Straylon.
Here.
Carlstone will lead your shorting.
Okay. City council has adopted the code of civility. As elected officials, we pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening, to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively and speaking up to address incivility. And a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV. So anyone who wishes to speak to council, please approach the podium, mic over there before you speak. So that anyone that's listening at home, watching on TV can hear your comments. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Straylon Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor Ross.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Appointment of a technical advisory committee, TAC, for the comprehensive plan and zoning code update. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those in attendance, those watching at home in Pella Five, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for the presentation on site. Mayor Ward stated what this appointment would be for the technical advisory committee for the city's planning, for the city's comprehensive plan and zoning code update. A little bit of background on the city's comprehensive plan. What this group is going to be doing is assisting the city on a very important planning matter. The comprehensive plan serves as the basis for all zoning decisions in the city of Pella. And the plan that we'll be looking at with the rise during the time period is actually for the year 2045. So it's a 20-year planning effort that will be implemented by the city. Once the plan is developed, we're also going to use that as the basis for updating the city's zoning code as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as individuals that are appointed to the committee through this appointment, they're listed up here. A few of the city's boards have not gotten back to us as of this date, so we still have some members that we haven't been able to identify who will be representing the various boards. It is important to note that Dr. Spencer Carlstone, who will be the chair of the committee as well, and in addition as part of this process, we're also going to be updating and actually presenting the plan for a community sign program that's been commonly referred to as We Fine, We Are Very Sign Fitting. And we do have a subcommittee, a larger group, that will be attending on that as well, assisting the city. So with this, this motion, we actually appoint a technical advisory committee for the city's comprehensive plan update.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support. Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. So I'll pre-thank the members of this committee. It takes a long time, it's a pretty big time commitment. So I appreciate the people from the communities' willingness to help on a project that's very important and does a lot toward shaping how we plan for the future. So I appreciate that. Now, I'll talk about appointing a neighborhood revitalization grant committee. I'm going to explain this because this is something that I thought up. I'll try to explain it the best I can. Obviously, I'm now in my sixth year being in this position. We've been talking about housing since day one. Obviously, I believe it was 2017, a housing study that, Mary, it was Marion Countywide, that Pella was going to need 966 housing units by 2025. Guess what? It's 2025. So that seemed like a long way off back then. But anyway, so we've had a lot of conversations about housing. We've been very active as a city in trying to promote new housing. Because there's been a big problem, has been a demand that has been far outpacing supply. And so it's led to higher prices. And so we've done some, we've done some work with some developers to try to encourage development in Pella. We've had, I believe, a lot of really good success. We have a lot of housing, new housing projects going on. Part of that process has been to create some TIF districts and work with developers to help alleviate some of the costs of development, to encourage the housing. One of the, one of the things under Iowa law, under Iowa code, when we do that, there's this thing called LMI, that's low to moderate income, that we're required, as we bring in these TIF revenues off of these developments, part of that, I think it's been roughly 34 to 36 percent of those TIF revenues need to be held in an account by the city to be used, it's LMI, it's low to moderate income, to be used for housing. There's not a whole lot of detail, but some kind of lower, lower-cost housing projects. And so as I thought about that, we're going to, when we have some significant funds, will eventually come into the city as these projects are built out. So as I thought about that, I thought that we should have some kind of a program in place so that when we have that, as we start building up that money, that we have a plan in place of how to use it. And so I thought of a grant program. So I went, I talked to, went and talked to Pella Corp. Because I felt like, you know, we do have a rather large window manufacturer right here in town, in case you aren't aware of that. But I thought it might be good if they would be interested in having a conversation about it. They were very excited about it. And I also went and talked to, to the bank, to Marion County Bank, because I thought financing might be a part of this whole puzzle. So that's kind of where my thought was. And so I thought about it. I talked to Lynn because I felt like Lynn would be the right person to craft this program. Right now, it's a blank piece of paper. I know there's a whole lot of programs, grant programs for housing that exist in different communities. Lynn and I have had some conversations. And I know one of the things I told her, I said, "I want it to be uniquely Pella." I said, "You can get all kinds of ideas, but I want, something about it needs to say Pella." And so she's agreed to, she's agreed to lead the charge on this, try to develop the program. So it'll be a process that'll take some time. And I reached out to a group of people to see if they would be part of it. Lynn, very excitingly, agreed to chair this, this team that will try to craft some kind of a grant program for this type of housing revitalization. Rhonda Kromod has done a lot of fixing up of homes. And she's got a lot of expertise there. Sean Thomas has also been a guy that's rehabbed some homes. Jessica Klein de Novella, she's, works for Pella Corporation. And Ryan Voss works at Marion County Bank. And so this, I'm asking the council to approve this concept, along with this group of people, to get started on it. And I'm going to turn it into Lynn's capable hands from here. And she'll eventually report back to us and ask for whatever she was asked for. So that's kind of the concept, my idea. Lynn, please fill in the blanks.
It's a, it's a very exciting program. And really rather groundbreaking for our community to do this. The monies will not go towards a down payment on the purchase of a home. Rather, it would go towards the renovation, restoration of a home for people that would qualify. The whole concept behind it is, rather than take the LMI money and build a structure, a big box, we took the approach that we want to build neighborhoods. And we want to take areas of the community that could use a little TLC and could use some families entering into that area and revitalize and energize those neighborhoods. So we're calling ourselves the NRG Committee. And I thought that was pretty appropriate when you look at the members of the committee, because it sounds like you're saying energy. And it is a very energy-filled committee. And completely excited about it.
And thank you for being willing to lead the charge. Now, we have to be patient, because it's going to take some time to kind of put the pieces together. You want to try to solve all the problems before you start and discover it some other way. But I know that this group will do a great job. And we'll look forward to what comes of it eventually. So I'm asking for a motion for approval of the Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Committee.
So moved.
Support. Mr. Straylon DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Straylon.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor Ross.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do you have a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter 21.51C to discuss strategy of council matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, or its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation?
So moved.
Or Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor Ross.
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
So we are going to remove ourselves from this room, go into the police chief's office to have our closed session. We'll be back and reopen the meeting in a few minutes. We are back in open session. And could you read the motion that we need to make coming out of our closed session?
If council would like to, they can move to approve and order execution of settlement agreement.
Or Hopkins, Mr. Straylon, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, public forum, anyone wishing to address council regarding agenda items? Step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. And please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, doesn't appear anyone's commenting at this time. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6798, entitled Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Community Attraction and Tourism Grant Agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Pella Recreation Center Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do would approve a grant agreement with Iowa, with the Iowa Economic Development Authority in the amount of $500,000 to support the construction of the proposed indoor recreation center. It's important to note, as far as the terms, the grant is over a three-year period of time and is for expenditure starting on December 20th, 2024, extends through December 31st, 2027. We would also like to bring council's attention that since this grant is state-funded, under state law, it's very likely that we're going to have to perform a life cycle analysis on the mechanical and electrical equipment for the facility. And basically, what this does is it generally involves comparing the proposed mechanical and electrical equipment to several alternatives for the facility as well. Estimated cost of the analysis is approximately $9,000. And we believe that item would be eligible for grant reimbursement as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. It is also important to note, we would like to bring the council's attention that if council were to approve this grant agreement, to date, the city has raised over $17.5 million for this project, which is a significant achievement on this as well. And finally, Mr. Mayor, it is important to note that the city has 45 days from the receipt of the grant agreement to execute it and return it back to the state.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horace DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution Number 6799, entitled Resolution Authorizing Construction of the Pella Indoor Recreation Aquatic Center and Fixing a Date for Hearing Thereon and Taking Bids Thereof. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a brief presentation on the site. And as Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do is just two things. It would authorize staff to give, have permission to solicit bids for the proposed indoor recreation center. And that would be construction bids for the project. It also establishes April 15th as the public hearing date for the project. I would also like to mention that the resolution does not obligate the city to construct the project. It simply operates as staff to solicit and seek construction bids for the project as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, overall, as far as the project is concerned, and the bid documents that we have, we'll be bidding the base project along with what's called the full plan and several alternatives with this. But when we talk about the base plan for the project, the base bid for the facility is just under 64,000 square feet. And it's over here on the left-handed side. And basically, it includes two full-size gymnasiums, a competition swimming pool, as well as, when you look at the base plan, it would include an indoor turf field up here. Now, we will be seeking bids on the full facility as well. The full facility includes two additional full-size gymnasiums, an indoor recreation pool, as well as a competition swimming pool. The full facility is at 78,000 square feet on there. Now, as far as the engineer's estimated cost for the project, the base bid is just over $28 million. And the alternate bids on this, so the alternate bids would be the two additional gymnasiums along with, in lieu of an indoor turf field, a full-size or indoor recreational pool. Those amount to just over $8 million as well. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, if council were to approve this, this resolution, the seating, staff would actually conduct a bid letting of the project on March 11th. And then on April 15th, we would hold a public hearing for the project. And that would be the decision date for the project, where council would actually consider a construction bid for the project. Now, finally, it is important to note that we believe a construction for a project of this size would take somewhere between 18 to 24 months and within. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation this evening. We are recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question here on this resolution. Why is it not worded just about the same as Resolution Number 6800, which is doing the same thing, by God, for bids? It just seems like, is there any question, any answer for that?
I'll, I'll try to answer that, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right. It's just a different approach. On bigger projects such as the indoor recreation center, the Alders Law Firm prepares all of the city's construction documents in the resolutions for council's consideration. And I would imagine it reforms only this standard language that the Alders Law Firm uses for the resolution title on that. For smaller projects that we have, city staff prepares the resolution and we send it off to the Alders Law Firm for review. So it's just a difference in who originated the documents between the two resolutions that were considered this evening. It is my understanding that there is concerns with the way that the title to the resolution is worded, that council does have the liberty to make changes to the title of the resolution. Is that correct, Emily?
Correct. You can do a motion to amend to make it reflect similarly to what the previous resolution states and what it states in the staff memo. So to alleviate any concerns. But the actual language of the resolution is controlling, and it's not ordering construction. It's starting that process.
I understand that. And I read the whole resolution. But I, I have a little, it sounds a lot like the resolution table, but I didn't go back and look at that one. But it just reads to me like it's ordering the construction. It should say ordering the construction items of the Pella Indoor Recreation Center, not the construction. The construction here is a, it's a verb, and it shouldn't be an adjective, I think. And so I would amend this resolution.
Just a minute, just a minute. Let's make sure we're doing this properly.
Okay.
I don't think we have a motion on the floor yet.
No.
We, we, so we can't amend a motion until we have it on the floor, I think.
All right.
So going back to the resolution, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
DeYoung, Hopkins. Now, we started discussion already. John's uncomfortable with the, the way the language reads. So to, I mean, obviously, I think it's been said many times, we are not signing a contract to build it now. But to grant comfort level, I'm fine with, with whatever we, however we need to amend, it's fine with me.
Sure.
The important thing is that tomorrow, requests for bids are going out. And we're going to get a bid by March 11th.
Yeah, let's find out.
Yeah, yeah. So can you, can you give us the proper language?
Yes. So if, on the staff memo, I think the subject is fine. If you want to do a motion to amend and then just read what that staff memo subject is, I think that's perfectly fine. And then we can then vote on it after the event.
All right. So I made a motion to amend this resolution wording by substituting the staff memo resolution, which is approving or agreeing the preparation of plans and specifications, form of contract, notice of hearing, notice of letting, setting date for public hearing, authorization of taking bids, and authorizing bid opening for the proposed Pella Indoor Recreation Center. And Aquatic Center. But.
Support. Okay, so Butler, who's supported? Hopkins, okay. Any discussion on the amendment question?
I would agree with that. Because when I read this, and I'm not a lawyer, but I taught English and a few other languages over the years, and, and I didn't agree with the way it was worded either. But I'm not a lawyer.
We'll take note of that. In the future, we will make sure that it says the same thing.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we will vote on the amendment, or the, yeah, amended amendment first. Or do we just vote for the amended motion? We gotta do the amended?
We're voting for the title at this point. And then we're going to have to vote for the actual content of the new title.
Okay.
Which is the same title.
Yes.
Okay, so we are voting on the language as amended, amended. Mandy, call the roll, please.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. So now the resolution has been amended to the language that John read. So now, is there any more discussion on the resolution as amended? Okay, now we will vote on the motion as amended. Mandy, please call the roll.
The motion.
Oh.
Some of us.
Of course.
I thought we did not watch. So we are re-motioning the motion as amended?
Yeah. Motion to adopt the resolution as amended.
As amended?
Yep.
Okay, so DeYoung, I heard, Hopkins, any other discussion? Okay, I'll call, Mandy, please call the roll.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, Resolution. I was hoping you weren't leaving, John. Okay, moving on, Resolution Number 6800, entitled Resolution Approving Ordering the Preparation of Plans and Specifications, Form of Contract, Notice of Hearing and Notice of Letting, Setting Date for Public Hearing, Authorizing the Taking of Bids and Authorizing Bid Opening for the City of Pella Annex Office Building Project. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, this is a very similar resolution to what council just considered. But this project is actually located on 215 Main Street. It is important to note that the city wasn't receiving the facilities from the community betterment organization. It was a very generous give to the city of Pella on this, or from the CBO to the city of Pella. And equally important to note is, we did discuss this project at its own time. The city council did direct staff to seek, proceed to seeking bids for this project. The plans and specifications have been completed. And basically, what this project does is very similar, is what you're really authorizing staff to do is seek bids for, paying construction bids for the project. And we're also authorizing March 18th as the public hearing date for the project. And we do have a description of the activities that are proposed to take place of the remodeled facility listed up here on the big board. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the base bid for the project, we're just shy of $1,483,000. And you can see what basically is included with the base bid. But we do have some alternate bids here that add some additional construction activities for them, but the city would not be at liberty, well, actually, the theory is alternate bids is, if funding is available, then the construction project will include these items. The alternate bids are estimated cost, just shy of $162,000. And we do have a description up on the board as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as funding for the project, we did have remaining funds that were left over from the city's local auction, sales and services tax that expired on December 31st, 2023. So that's a portion of the funding. And in addition, the city is proposing at this time issuing a general obligation bond for the project in the amount of $934,000. Now, if we were to issue a bond for this project, the potential impact to the city's debt service levy could be upwards of $0.12. But I would also like to mention that city staff is currently looking at ways or reviewing options for paying for cash on hand for this project as well. We'll be talking about this project during the 2026 budget round process or work sessions that are scheduled to be held in mid-March of this year. So with this, the critical dates, council board approved this resolution. And we actually hold a bid letting of the project on March 7th. The city council will consider construction bids on March 18th and final completion of the project. If council were to proceed to award the construction contract, final completion of a project of this size would take approximately 210 working days. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. We are recommending approval of the resolution this evening.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horace, Carlstone, any discussion?
Well, we may be done with our budget by the 18th of March.
What we'll have is, I get the dates confused, but Mandy, I think the budget work sessions are the 11th and 12th on this. And so at that time, we'll be reviewing the city budget. And the city council will also be receiving direction from the city council on the city's budget. So that, the city council will have reviewed the budget before it makes the decision on this project.
Okay.
Okay.
Does this plan get personnel out of the public works placement?
What it does is it actually, Mandy, will you go back to the first slide on this presentation, please? What it would do was our planning and zoning department, which is currently located in the basement of City Hall, they would actually move to this facility. And what we're also fighting to do is the bottom floor, the basement of the facility, would be just a general record storage area for the city of Pella. And then in addition, on the main floor of the building, we're planning to move the Marion County Driver's License Office to this facility as well. In addition, what we'll also have in there is a conference room and future office space. But the theory is, is with most of the planning and zoning departments meetings, which they serve four boards, most of those meetings will take place in the new facilities, which means this facility and this room is going to be available for more usage by the police department as well if we proceed with this project.
I'm just picturing that nightmare situation in the basement of Public Works.
Actually, we've actually moved the planning and zoning department already out of the basement of Public Works, out there in the basement of City Hall.
Yeah.
One basement to the other, so.
I'm just picturing boxes stacked to the ceiling.
Yep. Yeah, we're hoping to move those records to this location as well. So it'll be in one centralized location as well.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor Ross?
Yes.
Carlstone? Carl Stone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Strylan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Can I get a motion for approval of abstracted Bill Number 2168?
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Brandon Horace, Hopkins, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Strylan?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to have addressed this eve, addressed this evening? Any member of the public have any other business you'd like to have addressed council with this evening? If so, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, then we will adjourn to policy and planning to discuss some of the projects, updates on projects we've been talking about.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, what we have here is, I believe, the lone item that we have tonight is the city administration, project updates. Listed up on the board are the items that are on our list. Most of these items that you see up here will be discussed during policy and planning sessions within the next 30 days with the city of Pella. So, these are items that we intend to address at a February 18th meeting or on March 4th as well. Now, before we circle back to these items and ask council if they have any questions on these, on these items or any other projects in the city, we are going to cover two items that we'd like to make sure council's aware of that we're here planning to do. And as the council is aware, we're in the process of drafting the fiscal year 2026 budget. That fiscal year would actually start on July 1st of this year and extend through June 30th, 2026. We'd like to have permission to begin contract negotiations for the city's local auction redistribution agreement in Marion County. That agreement expires halfway through the budget year on here. And so, our thoughts are, by making contact with Marion County, while we may not have everything wrapped up by the budget process on, on here and both parties executing agreements, we at least want to make sure that Marion County is aware that the agreement only goes through six months of the year and may count for the remaining six months in the budget. And so, that's really the purpose of contacting Marion, Marion County on this. The second item that we've had, we've talked quite a bit in the past about this, and that's the service to Lake Prairie Fire District, which is currently serviced by both the city's fire department as well as the rural fire department. In addition, our ambulance department currently serves this area as well. What we'd like to do is contact Lake Prairie Fire District and get their position on, or their position as far as paying for ambulance services. So, at least we're aware of it during the budget discussions and we have it documented. In addition, we also have some capital improvement expenditures at our fire station, which Lake Prairie currently houses their fire trucks at our station as well. So, we'd like to talk about the cost sharing agreement for those capital improvements as well with Lake Prairie. So, those are the two informational items that we have. Mayor, we'd be more than happy to answer questions on either the city's local auction redistribution agreement or the potential cost sharing agreement with Lake Prairie for the fire station expenses or ambulance services, in addition to any other project this city is currently undertaking.
Haven't we already been down the path with Lake Prairie about ambulance service?
I believe it's been, it's been discussed once or twice before, and that is. But our thoughts are, when we go to budget deliberations, that we think it's at least important that we have their latest position for council to consider during the budget work sessions.
Did Lake Prairie have a change in leadership?
There's one trustee, it's our understanding, that is new on there. So, it's not the same board on there. But at least three of the, three of the members are still similar to, or are the same as some of the previously discussed ambulance services.
Okay.
Is there any progress on the services tax?
We had an initial meeting in January.
Okay.
And the next meeting is scheduled for the 12th. There's been a lot of information gathered. All of the, all of the ambulance services in Marion County have been asked to supply their financial information. And so, yes, the discussions have begun. So, I, I think kind of the plan was to maybe meet at least once a month, see where it leads. It's a pretty large group, so.
Lock the room, don't be a sound.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a, it was a cordial meeting, I think there's. You know, it's always about the details. When you talk high-level stuff, everybody can be happy, but then you start digging into details. So, we'll see. I'll, I'll keep everybody updated.
Is it, did our water, well, repair guys show up this week? Been warming up, but.
I'm going to actually refer that question back to your public works director, Denny.
Denny, Denny, Denny at the mic, please.
As I mentioned last meeting, I don't see that window being long enough till at least March, just with the average out of weather.
I have one more item. Is there, what's happening on the Hazel Street sidewalk?
The Hazel, Denny, if you can give an update.
It's under design. We've actually had a review meeting and went through some of the technical difficult areas. So, we'll be working towards a final design here in the next month or so. And we'll be talking about a letting date going into the spring for summer construction.
Anybody else have any questions? No one is going to object to Mike working, having these conversations, anyway. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
For Ms. Strylan, Hopkins, all in favor, please say yes. Opposed, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Ms. Strylan?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Raynor Horse?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed, we are adjourned.